Okay, welcome everyone. This is the joint hearing of the committees on EET and Hawaiian. And so, actually, I should let my, the other chair, Chair Morawaki, take the lead. I'm sorry, you're the lead on this first bill. So if you want to open up.
Aloha, everyone. It is not.
That's incorrect. That's incorrect. You're GVO, not EET.
Oh, I'm GVO.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong. I'm sorry.
Then it builds to 567.
Okay.
Hawaiian, you are the lead.
Okay, yes, I am the lead. Okay, very good. Sorry. Sorry, I just did. But anyway, because I have a lot of bills for today for Hawaiian and other committees, I'm going to be implementing a 90-second time limit for testifiers. And I ask, if possible, departments, if you could stand on your written testimony, it would be very much appreciated, if all possible. So without further ado, we're going to start with SB 2567. And for testifiers first up, we've got DHHL with comments.
Good afternoon, chairs. We stand on our testimony.
Okay. I think that was the only one signed up to testify live. Any questions? Okay, seeing none, let's move on then. SB 2594, BNF with comments.
Chair will stand on our written testimony.
Thank you. OIP, I'm sorry, DLNR with opposition.
Chair Russell Tsuji will stand on our testimony in opposition on the, especially on the financial impacts to our department.
Thank you so much. Attorney General, comments? If they're here. DHHL with comments?
Chair, we stand on our testimony with comments.
Thank you. OHA with opposition?
Chair, we oppose and stand on our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you. I think that's all the people signed up to testify. Any?
Hold on, I might send you some.
Any questions? Okay, so I'm on my phone. So if you have a question, I might not see your hand. Just raise your, just speak up if you have a question. Okay, seeing none. You know, the chair has conferred prior to this because of the big agenda we have. We're going to bypass going into a breakout room because our, we're going to recommend for SB 2567 that we just pass with, I think was as-is. Leave, yeah, Alex, there's no, no technical amendments needed for 2567, right?
2567.
Yeah, no technical?
No.
Okay. So yeah, so 2567, any discussion members? And I'm going to ask if Senator Acasio is able to take the vote for Hawaii. Thank you. Okay, so if Hawaii can go ahead and take the vote for 2567 passing as-is.
Measure 20, Senate Bill 2567, passing as-is. Chair?
Aye.
Vice Chair? Acasio votes aye. Senator Ihara? Senator Favela?
Aye.
Aye. Chair, your measure passes.
Thank you. For Government Operations Committee. The same recommendation for the Government Operations Committee. I see my members here. Senator, Chair votes aye. Senator Delacruz, excuse me. Senator Chang, excuse me. Senator Gabbard?
Aye.
And Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation passes.
Thank you so much. And now the chair has also conferred about SB 2594. And due to the opposition and concerns raised, we're going to recommend this measure be deferred. Any discussion or questions? Okay, seeing none, then we're going to adjourn the joint Hawaiian GVO hearing. Thank you so much, Chair Morawaki.
Mahalo.
Okay, and I'm going to go ahead and dabble in, if that's okay with Tech to my 101 agenda. And then we'll hop back to EET with 110, just because we have a lot of bills on the thing. So we have the 101 Hawaiian Affairs only agenda. So I guess we'll go ahead and begin. Okay, so welcome, everyone. We're going to go into our 101 Hawaiian-only agenda. And we will recess this at 110 to do the joint agenda. But we have, we're going to just go ahead and start, because of the time, with SB 2566. And first up, we have Attorney General's Office with comments.
Good afternoon, Chair Shimabukuro, members of the committee, pray to the Attorney General. Our only comment is that the bill might violate the separation of powers doctrine, as well as Article 5, Section 6 of the Hawaii Constitution, because it limits the candidates that the governor may consider when filling vacancies on the Hawaiian Homes Commission. Because DHHL, of course, is one of the principal departments of the executive branch. So we suggest amending the measure to make the district council recommendations advisor. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you so much. Next, we have DHHL with comments. Not sure if they wanted to testify live.
Yeah, good afternoon, Chair. We will stand on our comments with strong concern.
Okay, thank you. I think that was all the live testifiers I had. Is there anyone else that I missed for SB 2566 for live? We do have quite a bit of written testimony and support. Okay, so members, any questions? Okay, let's see. I guess I had a few, maybe for, for DHHL. Now, in your testimony, I mean, the thing about, you said about the time limit, is that something you could live with, though? The 60 days? I mean, you had some concerns, but if we were to, if it was to be implemented, could you live with that time limit?
I think that would be more problematic for the governor's process than us. Also, I think, I just want to highlight that we, the commission has not taken us, well, has taken a position against recognizing individual homestead associations, because we have oftentimes been put in the middle of conflicting homestead associations for, was considered district areas or regional areas. So that's, we feel that's a strong reason why the comments should be, our comments should be taken seriously.
Okay, okay. What else? Okay, other questions, members? 2566?
Yeah, I got a question.
Yes, Senator Favela.
Do we have anybody now on the commission that's not a beneficiary?
I believe Kapi is not a beneficiary. Yeah, I, I know one commissioner is not 50%, but I don't know if that commissioner would be able to succeed. So we can check and get back with you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, you're welcome. Okay. You know, at this point, any other questions, members? At this point, let's recess and get prepared for the joint Hawaiian EET hearing. So if Tech could, if they have this, that the countdown or switches out or whatever.
I'd like to convene our Joint Committee on, Committee on Energy Economic Development Tourism and our good friends from the Committee on Hawaiian Affairs, Gung Hifachoi, everyone. We're on our 110 agenda. I am sitting here by myself, so lonely in room 016, but joined by our friends online. We have two measures on this agenda. The first one is Senate Bill 2035 relating to regenerative tourism. We have signed up to testify live is John DeFreeze from the Hawaii Tourism Authority. Don't know if John is there. Maybe he'll be coming on later. We also have, expressing interest to testify, Danielle Bass from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development.
I'm admitting him right now, Chair.
Sure.
Oh, hi, Danielle.
Oh, hi. Hello, Senator. Aloha, aloha, chairs. Aloha, vice chairs, members of the committee. My name is Danielle Bass, day sustainability coordinator from the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development. We mahalo the committees for scheduling this bill, and we are, we are testifying in support of this measure. We offer the committee about nine amendments. Actually, eight of them are for clarity and consistency, to merge this language nicely in, within to the Hawaii State Planning Act for clarity and consistency reasons. The ninth amendment, we've noticed that the last tourism functional plan was actually last updated in 1991. We find that to be over 30 years old. And well, it's about time to update the tourism functional plan. So we strongly recommend that the legislature consider adding a new section in the bill for the update of the tourism functional plan. Mahalo.
Thank you for your commentary, Danielle. And that's all we have. Just want to check in with Tech. Do we have anybody from the Hawaii Tourism Authority? No? Okay. Members, any questions for Ms. Bass? No? Okay, I'm going to send it over to Chair Shimabukuro to take care of the second item on the agenda.
Thank you so much. The next measure we have is SB 3195 regarding geothermal energy on DHHL lands. And so first up, we have DHHL in support.
Yes, aloha, Chair. Both chairs, we stand in strong support.
Okay, thank you. Hawaii State Energy Office also in support. They may not be here yet. Okay, I think that's all the live testimony. We have others in support. We do have one opposition from Regina Gregory. Any questions for DHHL or the Energy Office? Speak up if you have to do, if not. Okay. In that case, looks like we can go ahead into decision-making.
Yes, so the chairs have conferred on the first bill, Senate Bill 2035. Like to ask members if you are okay with us implementing the suggested amendments by Danielle Bass. She mentioned the nine suggested amendments, all of which are to help us integrate the good work that's in the bill into the Hawaii State Planning Act, and also technical non-substantive amendments. Any discussion on the recommendation? If not, if you don't mind, I'm going to take my own vote, since I'm so multi-talented and passionate here.
And you are indeed.
Oh, I, I'm good. So the recommendation on Senate Bill 2035 for EET is to pass with amendments. I vote yes, Senator Misilucha.
Aye.
Senator Lee, excuse, Senator Revere, excuse, Senator Favela.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, for Hawaii, same recommendation.
Senate Bill 2035 passing with amendments. Chair?
Aye.
Vice Chair, Kyoko Kalale, excuse. Senator Acasio votes aye. And Senator Ihara is excused. Senator Favela?
Aye.
Chair, your, your measure passes.
Thank you so much. Now, for SB 3195, recommendation is to pass this out with amendments. We're going to zero out the appropriation, but mention the appropriated request in the committee report, and then any technical amendments that might be needed as well. Any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, if Senator Acasio could take the vote again for Hawaii, please.
Chair, Senate Bill 3195 with amendments as well as technical amendments. Chair votes?
Aye, sorry.
Vice Chair, Kyoko Kalale, excuse. Acasio votes aye. Sorry, Acasio votes with reservations. Senator Ihara is excused, and Senator Favela? Mahalo, your measure passes.
Thank you.
Same recommendation for EET. Any discussion? If not, members, we are voting on Senate Bill 3195 to pass with amendments. Chair votes yes. Senator Misilucha?
Aye.
Senator Lee, excuse, Senator Revere, excuse, Senator Favela?
Aye.
Okay, measure is adopted.
Okay.
We are adjourned for this 110 agenda.
Thank you so. Okay, welcome back, everyone. We're now back to our Hawaiian-only agenda that was 101 PM. And we left off on SB 2566. Like, I don't think we had any further questions. So then we're going to move on to the second bill, SB 2605, which is independent counsel for DHHL. And first, we have Attorney General in opposition.
Good afternoon, Chair Shimabukuro, members of the committee. Department of the Attorney General opposes this bill. It's because the Department of Hawaii Home is, it's a principal department of the executive branch of the government, and it's not a standalone independent agency. The trust obligations created by the Hawaii Homes Commission Act are obligations of the state which DHHL implements. And further, the Department of the Attorney General has particular expertise not found in the public sector, in the private sector, excuse me. And we also have the unique ability to establish ethical walls when conflicts between agencies develop. And finally, HRS 28-8.3 provides a mechanism where agencies such as DHHL may request a waiver from the governor and hire a dependent counsel. And in fact, DHHL has exercised this waiver process in the past. And beyond that, I'm just available to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have DHHL in support.
We stand in support of this measure and respectfully disagree sometimes with Attorney General's office.
Okay, thank you very much. Lemo Mikan in support? I think she's just written only something. Homelanis Chadel in support? Homelan, did you want to testify live? There's a 90-second time limit, though, if you want to testify. You're muted right now. Okay, there. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, very quickly, Chair, mahalo. I'm Homelanis Chadel, beneficiary residing in Malohei and a homestead leader in Kapalei. I heard what Mr. Hawaii had to say, but I still want to know what is it that we need to do? You know, what real distinction does the other departments have that DHHL doesn't? And what disqualifies DHHL from having the same opportunity? The other thing I'm reminded of is that no man, including the Attorney General's Office, can serve two masters, that being of the state and DHHL. Both of these bills mirror each other. 2506 and 25, I'm sorry, 2605 and 2607. "To protect the interests and elevate and improve service and opportunities to beneficiaries, DHHL from time to time requires experience in expeditious, key word, expeditious, legal assistance." So your support and passage of this bill will provide DHHL the same opportunity that already exists to others. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. I think that was it for live testimony. Any questions, members?
Chair, I do have a question.
Yes, Senator Acasio?
So, Chair, wouldn't you mind if, if the AG is available to answer those questions that were presented? So, the numerous other agencies that you mentioned, OHA, which, for example, have these as an option, why not DHHL? And then the logic behind why those other agencies would have this and would apply to DHHL?
Thank you, Senator. The, there's no other principal state agency that I know of that has that kind of blanket authority. So there may be, you know, smaller agencies that are attached, or there may be, for example, agencies such as OHA that are unique and standalone agencies under the state constitution, or UH. So, I believe that DHHL would be the only primary state agency with such broad ability to hire a dependent counsel under this bill. And, you know, I'd also like to point out that there still is a process where DHHL can obtain a dependent counsel. And they already do have a dependent counsel on several matters that I'm aware of.
Further questions? No? Okay. All right, thank you. Then let's move on to SB 2607, also independent counsel for DHHL. Attorney General in opposition.
Chair Shimabukuro, our testimony mirrors that of 2605.
Okay, thank you. DHHL in support?
Yes, Chair, we stand in strong support of 602607.
Okay, thank you. I'm Homelanis Chadel in support.
Yes, Chair. Again, I heard what he said. And I'm not quite sure if I can wrap my head around that and if that's palatable to me. But I will stand on my testimony as I have for 2605.
Thank you so much. Members, any, any questions about SB 2607?
Chair Shimabukuro?
Senator Acasio, yeah.
So I guess this would be to Chair Ila, in the same respect. Can, could you possibly give some feedback as to the same questions that were given to the AG in terms of, I mean, I guess, in some ways, addressing those, that issue of having it be a standalone agency?
Well, we're a standalone agency, I'm sorry, we're not a standalone agency, however, we are also unique in terms of the powers that are given to the Hawaii Homes Commission, the zoning powers that are afforded to us via the Hawaii Homes Commission Act. So we're, we're not the same as other state, primary state agencies, and therefore, many times, the, the direction that beneficiaries and the commission would, would like to go often, not often, but sometimes, conflict with the state's overall agenda. And in those times, we definitely have been allowed to go to outside counsel. However, we just feel that as an agency that is continuing to grow in terms of responsibilities and in terms of asks by beneficiaries, that independent counsel would, I think, provide us with additional analysis, absence of any state competing interests.
Thank you for that.
Further questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to SB 2608. This is the gambling study for DHHL. So first up, we have DHHL in support.
Stand in strong support, Chair.
Okay, next, we have Samantha Decourt in opposition. Is she here?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, aloha. Thank you, Chair and community members for having me. My name is Samantha Decourt. I am a resident in the YNI Coast, and I am testifying in opposition to Senate Bill 2608 relating to gambling. As you are aware, many did not support this proposed bill last year, along with the Honolulu Police Department, Prosecutor's Office, and other elected officials. To think that funds from a proposed casino on native Hawaiian homelands would restore the deficit and revenue shortfall of our state is not the appropriate proposal in generating capital for DHHL. If DHHL wants to dig their department out of its financial crisis, they can start by charging some of its lessies who are on commercially owned native Hawaiian lands to pay market rent, such as Kamakana Alii on Hawaiian homelands in Kapalei, less than market value rent to the trust, part of the Kapalei Transit Center on Hawaiian homelands, the Heart Building in Pro City, who spent over $2.5 million to build their building. And how much did they pay to the trust? Nothing. Poor management such as this is why commissioners are currently gathering for a permitted interactive, for a permitted interaction committee meeting, the PIG, for the reevaluation of commercial rates and to hold the department accountable to be consistent with charging market value for the trust to all lessies on native Hawaiian homelands. It's unfortunate that our senator, who represents the largest population of homesteaders in this state, would support a bill that is so detrimental to our native Hawaiian community, only confirms that two decades of serving in office is just too long. With all due respect, Senator Shimabukuro, this is not a policy that you can continually shove down the throats of our indigenous people. Because if you learn anything about the community you claim to represent, is that regardless of who is in office, we will continue to hold the mission and values of our native Hawaiian community members and hold those in higher position accountable. Mahalo for your time, and I strongly urge you to kill Senate Bill 2608. Mahalo.
Thank you, Mr. Court. Bronson Azama in opposition?
Not present, Chair.
Oh, not present yet? Okay. If he does come, please let me know. Homelanis Chadel in support?
Thank you, Chair. In the, in the interest of time, I'm going to go to the second page of my testimony. So here we are today to do just a study. And I support passage of this bill with the hope that it will not be a futile attempt to be diminished and ignored, but rather a critical first step to explore and establish a potential constant funding resource to advance and support all beneficiaries in all areas of the Hawaii Homes Commission's Act, residential, pastoral, agricultural, economic development, education, training, and support, et cetera. Above all else, we must determine if this is right for us, applying and approaching this study with kinaole. We are in the first year of the next 100 years since passage of the HACA. We must all commit to ensuring the legacy of Prince Jonah Kohio Kalani'ana'ole and beneficiaries of the HACA flourish. Meanwhile, the kahel will be sent for every applicant on the waitlist and every lessie to hold the 2022 legislative body to task and ensure DHHL receives the $600 million this session. Do not use this ploy as, because it is election year. We will hold you to it. We will not forget. Mahalo.
Mahalo. I think that was all the live testimony we had. Members, any questions? If I could, oh, go ahead, Senator Favela.
Yeah, hi. This is, I guess, for Hawaiian Homes. I guess this is from Mr. Ila. Part of this package, wasn't this submitted to the governor earlier in your guys' governor package? And now, can you elaborate on what happened when you guys submitted this to the governor?
Yeah, we did submit, okay. So first, let me start with, the Hawaii Homes Commission approved this bill to go into the, to go into the executive package, excuse me, 8 to 1. So leave no doubt that the commission fully supports this study to gather, to gather additional information upon which to make future decisions based on information and not just emotion. The governor decided not to include it in his administrative package, which is why it's being introduced.
which is why it's being introduced by other legislators.
Yeah, the reason why I bring this up, and we know already, that's the reason why we have bills this year coming around. The commission does its work. We know that they had one commissioner, Patagono Mukuturo, was the only one in opposition. But the thing is, what we tried to explain to Senator Mike, this came up numerous and numerous of times, and again, what we let know is, why are you guys like doing study when you guys don't even have the money for your guys enforcement agency? That you guys are coming to the Senate to give you guys money for enforcement, which you had did away with the enforcement agency, I guess, within your term. So I let know, why would you want to do a study on gambling? Right now, you know and I know, you had numerous complaints of all gamblings, and not only where your guys' homestead offices, there's two or three in that area, and that you know about, that we see the emails and transpired emails. But one of them was there from 2004. We know it's before your time, but it came before you numerous of times from the other area representatives and concerned citizens in the area. So I just let know, you like doing study, okay? You like us choose one study, but then, when you came on board, you knew you had problems. You had problems with gambling, drugs, prostitution, and sex trafficking. And I have it all in the binder before me. You had the same information given to you that was given to me by the Kalanos, Kalana Avenue area. So I'm not sure if you know about the area. I know, I know about the area, so I know you know. So the thing is, before we can ask for a study, Mr. Ilah, for the legislators to give you $500,000, yeah? Again, we should clean up our own backyard, using that money that we have and use it for enforcement. Make our families that's living there on homestead now safe and secure. Then they may have trust in you and doing a study for gambling, when you can actually have an enforcement agency that the Hawaiian community and the state of Hawaii can trust. Right now, there is no trust in Hawaiian homes, and you guys can't even handle a study and then even having a facility being run in Hawaii on homestead land. And you guys still try to use Kamakana Alii too, okay? Even though you say not, you know, I know. So Kamakana Alii too, next to Verona Village, where all the nice land you get over there. In fact, the grass you gotta cut because it's too high around that area might cause on fire. The area that you was planning to do your guys casino. So the bottom line is this, Mr. Ilah. Can we go work on enforcement and cleaning up 2004 or 2000 present of gambling and issues on Hawaiian homes now? See, you guys cherry pick who you guys want to kick out and who you guys want to do things and put before the kind you guys counsel, because you know that they all vote with you. That's the thing that you've been seeing. Time after time, they all vote with you, all go with you, very, very seldom to go against what would you bring upon there. That's the reason why we want to separate how the governor chooses our homesteaders, that our homesteaders choose our leaders in Hawaiian homes, separate their position of chair and being director. All of that is what's coming up this year in legislation because of the poor running of this department with Joby in the background cherry picking everything you guys do. So again, besides using this for a study, why don't you take that money, ask for a study in how you can clean up all the bad activities that you're having on Hawaiian homestead now? Why don't you use enforcement instead of trying to do a study on gambling? When you know already, over 50,000 people had responded, didn't want it, but then you still want to do this study. The governor didn't want it in this package. We, again, don't want it. But then, again, you consider, I know, because mine tells us time and time again that you guys are great friends. But great friends should be separated in doing things that's going to hurt and make the public upset. Okay, I could be a great friend with you, but if I know the public do not want to hear gambling studies, gambling on Hawaiian homes, gambling, 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 and I wouldn't hear it. I'll tell you, you know, Mr. Ilah, I know me and you is good friends, but I cannot put it through because the governor didn't even want to hear it. So why are we trying to push this through, Mr. Ilah? So, yeah, you do your best. I mean, I know I talk a lot, how are you?
Thank you, Senator Favella, for your commentary. Number one, we never cut any budget for enforcement. Number two, the enforcement of criminal activities, whether it's on Hawaiian homelands or off Hawaiian homelands, is the jurisdiction of the police department or the state AG's criminal department or the FBI, depending on where it occurs. With regards to Kailana Avenue and the other location that you brought up, the commission is going to take a vote on whether to move forward with a contested case hearing on those particular properties where these violations are occurring. So we are acting on it. And with regards to your question about why we're proposing to do a gaming study, it is within the eight commission members fiduciary duty to study all possibilities of obtaining revenue by which to operate the Department of Hawaiian Homelands in the best interest of all of the beneficiaries of the trust. So thank you for the opportunity to provide answers.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so if that isn't the best interest by doing a study for gambling, and that's your guys' duty, then why don't you guys duty to get all the lease that you guys have and not give everybody such a free time? Give them a maximum of the highest of what land is now and have them do it. You guys give a lot of breaks to a lot of people that have money. Kamakana doesn't need a break for leasing land from Hawaiian home. They get the most land and probably more money than anybody else. Why are we giving them tax breaks and letting them have free land from Hawaiian homes? Okay, that's one. Another one is Hawaiian Electric. That's another one, okay? Again, solar farms, they're not paying fair market value for the solar farm. And what about the licensing that you guys have with that place Easter Seals? Prime land, right by the rail, turnkey land, and you can put houses there. But you guys gave it to Easter Seals to go ahead and use them for their facility, yeah? Should have been a conflict of interest because the person used to be around, know a lot about Hawaiian homes. So if you like tell us to trust you in a study, Mr. Ilah, why don't you care to collect fair market value for all of your leased lands that you leasing out, other people licensing and so forth and so on? And collect that revenue first. So we can trust you guys trusting in the land and collecting the money, then maybe we see that the study would be warranted. I didn't say you took away the budget, Mr. Ilah, for enforcement. You discontinued it. You closed it. I didn't say you took the money from it. You closed it. Under your reign, you closed the department that maybe moved around some people and got rid of some people. I didn't say you took away the budget. Under your leadership, you discontinued the enforcement. I didn't say you took away the budget. So that's what I'm explaining. So before you say you guys need more money, then you should look at the money that we're not getting and the revenue we're not getting first.
Okay, so I want to assure you that any general lease that we have out there goes through an appraisal process, and we're getting the highest and best use and the best, charging the appropriate fees for that. With regards to enforcement, we had enforcement personnel leave for whatever reasons. Then the state went into a hiring freeze, and we're now able to hire those positions back again. So we're in the process of renewing the positions for positions that actually go out and do the compliance slash enforcement for the department. So there was no closing of anything. It just was a situation of some people left the position. During the COVID downturn, there was a hiring freeze. The hiring freeze is done. Governor said we can hire positions, and we're in that process right now. We are collecting highest and best rates for every general lease that we have. It wasn't the Easter Seals, it's the Special Olympics. With regards to Kamakana Schools, the Special Olympics, they're being charged less than, less than appraise rates because they're servicing children from the homesteads. So we are being compensated. Thank you.
Okay, okay, one more follow up. So you just said that you guys have the appraisal, and you guys getting fair market rate. Who in your department, who is the expertise in your guys' department that is saying this land is feasible, this land is not feasible, this is the way we're gonna make it? Who does you guys appraisal for each of our properties? Because you didn't even get the appraisal of correct with Verona Village and the changing of the properties that you guys had for real. So again, I understand you said Easter Seals is servicing the community. So can you give me a count how much homestead children actually is being serviced there? And then, you have other properties that you could have used for them. Why didn't you take the prime property that was actually set aside for homesteaders or you guys subdivision villa? There's other lands in Auburn's Point where you said it's not accurate for build housing, but it could have had a facility like what Easter Seals has over there. So that's the thing that I'm saying. Who makes all these decisions? Is it a whole panel of people or just a few individuals? Because you know, I know, there's other places that they could have went and have that thing done, even Kamakana Schools, even though they servicing our people. But it's not servicing our people that's on the waitlist right now. So I let know, you told me, you brought that up right now. So you give me a list on how much actual Easter Seals children that's being serviced right now there. At least have to be at least over 50% would be good. But I know and you know, when I seen the guys testify, and I went there and testified about against this thing going forward, I talked to the children that was there. Everybody was from Waipahu, Pearl City, and Aia. I never talked to any homesteaders that was testifying there. Seven of them was not even in the community. So I don't know who you jiving, but I just really, you give me some list, give me names, give me the amount and count. Because you tried to right now in front of here, push this gambling stuff because of money. But you guys mismanage a lot over there. You guys have half a billion dollar now for infrastructure, yeah? But then you said that's an emergency or that's whatever fund. But you guys didn't do the land acquisition ever correctly. And then when you go for consultation, you cherry pick on how much time you guys go to consultation? Because you guys use the virus and all these other excuses. So again, tell me how much that 200 acres, how much acres that solar farm is on, and you telling me that I will give an appraiser, a person that do land appraisers on a regular scale, and we see how numbers are off. That land is big dollars. The land by Easter Seals by Croft Center is big money, big money. So we could have had people living on that lot, on that lot, and you could have relocated Easter Seals and give him licensing in another area that Hawaiian homes have land. But you guys chose the best prime area for homesteaders. Do you understand the disconnect here? Why nobody trust that? Nobody trust you guys going forward with any more money going to you guys? Even the $600 million that you guys going get? Yeah, but lobby form because it's for the people. But again, it's administration cannot. So that's my comment, and I'm done already. Do you guys know my answer is a definitely no, big time no?
Thank you, Senator Favella. One quick, as far as the land exchange for the Verona Drum and the site that the county is on, there was no issue or misappraisal being done. The issue was with the Department of Interior agreeing upon the methodology for the appraisal. We have done that. The appraisals have come in. The only remaining factor is for the county to figure out how to make up the difference, because our land is appraised as slightly higher than their land. And once the county is able to compensate us for that, then this land swap will be concluded. Albeit, it took a while, but, you know, it's getting done under our watch. I will take a look at the tape of this and figure out what the appropriate questions are to provide answers to Senator Favella on the many issues that he brought up. So thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Other questions, members? I have a question for DHHL. You know, given the controversialness of this measure, some of the concerns raised, we did have an informal email exchange as part of the hearing, but, you know, possible amendments to this bill, possible alternative language to the bill. Some of the issues, some of the ideas that have come up was sports betting, you know, instead of casino, what if it's sports betting or what if it's a lottery? Now, would DHHL be open to this committee considering amending this bill, you know, to replace this gambling study with either an authorization or a study of sports betting and/or lottery?
I think we would be open to that, however, Chair. That's not our first choice, and I'm not sure. I mean, the testimony that I've heard in opposition is about testifying against gaming, not necessarily a study. In order for commissioners to conduct, conclude their fiduciary duty, they need information. In order for the community, the beneficiary community to have a real discussion, as Homelani Shadel testified to, we need information. All this study will do is to provide us with information by which to have further discussions going forward. And I would point out that, again, the commission voted eight to one to approve the study because they feel that this is necessary in order for them to continue the deliberations on whether or not to keep.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, then let's move on. We've got next is SB 2623. This is the measure that talks about transferring and selling leases and then being ineligible to go back on the waitlist. So first up, we have DHHL with comments.
We stand on our testimony and comments.
Okay, I think that's it for live testimony. Any questions for DHHL? Actually, I have a question for DHHL. You know, one thing that I was thinking as maybe a compromise way to amend this bill would be, what if we were to say that only those who sell or transfer their lease for personal gain would then be ineligible to go back on the waitlist? Would that improve the bill in your mind?
Well, first of all, as pointed out in the testimony, the actual numbers of beneficiaries who sell their land and get back on the waitlist is rather small. There's a process. They go to the bottom. I would, I would sort of ask that question, be addressed to the introducer of the bill, because this is not a department bill.
Okay. I can check with them. All right, other questions?
Sure, I have a question.
Yes, Senator Acasio?
I guess it would be to Chair Ilah, but so your testimony filed that it's not really needed because it's such a small number of cases. I'm also wondering if these, some of the cases are like they moved island to go take care of, take care of family or, you know, circumstances that aren't necessarily for personal being, just like Chair had mentioned or alluded to. You know, something that's understandable in terms of wanting to switch location or something like that.
Yes, I know of a few cases like that, but I can't say what percentage of the 176 that they make up.
But it is something that you see occasionally.
It occurs. People will move to take care of parents. People will move to take care of children who are chronically ill, issues like that.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, other questions? Okay, next we have SB 3101. This is exempting homestead development from GAT taxes. And first up, we have Tax Foundation with comments.
Hi, good afternoon. Yeah, hi. Hi, hello.
Proceed, proceed.
Hi, yes, thank you. My name is Jade McMillan. I'm praying on behalf of the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We will stand on our submitted written comments. Thank you.
Thank you so much. DHHL in support?
We stand in strong support of this bill.
Thank you. Downloading Company in support?
Not present, Chair.
Okay, and then Homelani Shadel in support?
Again, aloha, Chair. In my testimony...
Um, in my testimony, I provide comparisons between the department and Hawaii Housing Finance and Development Corporation. And as you can see, um, they do receive general excise tax, whereas the department does not. Um, the other comparison is the C I P funding of seventy-eight million to the department and, um, and eighty-five million, um, well, there was forty of C I P, but there were other funds. I think the distinction here is that we have asked and come before this body before. And again, what is the distinction between the two agencies? What disqualifies DHHL from receiving, um, the same opportunity for, as HHF D C? And so I ask you to ask these questions of yourselves. And I trust that you will move this bill forward to bring parity um, in support of DHHL and our beneficiaries. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Um, I think that was it for live testimony. Questions, any questions from the members? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on. SB thirty one oh four, this is interim rules allowing DHHL to, um, issue interim rules that are exempt from public notice and hearing and government control approval on a temporary basis. Um, so first up, we've got DHHL in support.
Uh, thank you, Chair. We do stand in strong support of this bill.
Okay, Bronson Azama, opposition. See present?
Our present chair.
Okay, uh, Homa Lani Shadel in support?
Again, Chair, um, mahalo for the opportunity. I just wanna make a few comments. Um, I do urge you to pass this bill to provide the Hawaiian Homes Commission and DHHL with a crucial tool to expedite relief and service to our beneficiaries. Um, earlier, Senator Favella made some comments about, um, homes in various areas within our homesteads that have issues um, with neighbors, with gambling, with drugs. Um, and this would allow the department to formulate a plan and process, take it out to our beneficiaries, um, to, to define um, the roles or responsibilities and what's expected and how the department can assist homestead associations that have this prob, this ongoing and continuous problem. Mahalo.
Mahalo. Okay, does it, any, uh, any questions, members? Okay, then the last bill, SB thirty one oh five, this is related to adoption. Allows adopted individual to benefit both by relationship to natural parent and through adopted parent um, in dispositions regarding DHHL. And so we have DHHL in support?
Very strong support, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, Homa Lani Shadel also in support?
Mahalo, Chair. Um, again, I will just make a comment in particular on one of my paragraphs. I just wanna give you an example. Um, when our mother passed, her wishes was that my nephew would receive the home as a successor. Um, because my brother was her successor. And so I went through the adoption process for my brother to adopt our nephew. And so this legally changed the familial relationship between my sister's other children. So now that brother is now their cousin. However, my sister's children still and will continue to view each other as brothers and sisters. So there are some critical components that must be considered. And I, I especially support this bill because I believe it supports our cultural sense of Ohana to remain intact. But it also ensures that the blood quantum is followed in accordance with the H H C. Mahalo.
Thank you so much. Um, many questions from the members. Okay, seeing none. Okay, then we're going to go into a breakout to recess for decision making. Okay, welcome back. Um, we are here for the decision making on our one oh one P M agenda for Hawaiian Affairs only, starting with SB twenty five sixty-six. This is talking about nominations for the Hawaiian Homes Commission and doing it with recommendations from the Hawaiian Homestead and Beneficiarization Association. So with this, I, I think, um, the committee needs a bit more time um, to contemplate the next steps on this bill. We're gonna defer this measure until Thursday. Um, we have a Thursday, February third, one oh one P M agenda in room sixteen and also on Zoom. And so we'll be, um, making more decisions at that time. Any discussion or questions, members? Uh, next for SB twenty six oh five, recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions or concerns? Okay, seeing none, um, I think Senator Acasio, we can take the votes. I think she's there in person anyway. We got the vote sheets. Or, yeah.
Okay, so this is voting on Senate Bill twenty six oh five?
Yeah, as is.
As is.
Yes.
Chair for the vote?
Aye.
No.
Vice Chair Kyoko Kalale?
Aye.
Acasio votes aye. Favella, Senator Favella.
This is twenty six oh five.
Twenty six oh five.
No.
Are you, um, measure passes?
Okay, thanks so much. Then actually SB twenty six oh seven, same measure, very similar measure. I'm just gonna recommend we go ahead and pass it as is as well. Independent legal counsel.
Um, Chair, Senate Bill twenty six oh seven, um, passing as is. Chair for the vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kyoko Kalale?
Aye.
Acasio votes aye. Uh, Senator Favella?
No.
Thank you, Chair. Um, your measure passes.
Thank you. SB twenty six oh eight, this is related to the DHHL gambling study. Um, you know, after, you know, this, this measure, you know, there is controversy about this measure. Um, where I'm considering amendments, looking at possibly sports, sports betting instead or lottery, um, possibly other, other forms of, um, raising funds for DHHL. Um, and so I'm gonna defer this measure until Thursday as well. So it's Thursday, February third, one oh one P M in room sixteen and also on Zoom um, for SB twenty six oh eight. Any discussion or questions, members? Okay, seeing none, we're gonna move on to SB twenty six twenty-three. This is the measure about transferring, um, and selling leases and then being ineligible for the waitlist. You know, I'm gonna recommend that we pass with amendments. And the amendment would be that if you sell or transfer, transfer for personal gain, um, then you'd be ineligible for the waitlist. You know, however, those, on the other hand, that might sell or transfer for reasons other than personal gain, you know, for, um, you know, family reasons, disability, illness, that kind of thing, then they would, um, they would still be eligible for the waitlist. And there's also technical amendments, um, as well. But any questions or concerns or discussion? Uh, seeing none, then Senator Acasio?
Senator, Senate Bill, um, twenty six twenty-three with amendments. Um, Chair, your vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kyoko Kalale?
Aye.
Uh, and Acasio vote, I vote with reservations. And Senator Favella?
Aye.
And noting the absence of Senator Yarara.
Thank you.
Your measure passes.
Okay, SB thirty one oh one, this is exempting DHHL developments from G E T taxes. Uh, recommendation is to pass with amendments that was recommended by D N F. Any questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none, then Senator Acasio, please.
Chair, um, Senate Bill thirty one zero five, passing as is.
Thirty one, thirty one zero one, yeah, with amendments.
All right, Senate Bill thirty one oh one with amendments.
Yes.
Chair, your vote?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kyoko Kalale?
Aye.
Um, I, Acasio votes aye. Senator Favella?
Reservations.
Okay, thank you. Chair, your measure passes.
Thank you. SB thirty one oh four, this is, um, regarding, um, administrative rules, interim rules. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, then Senator Acasio?
Senate Bill thirty one zero four, passing as is. Um, Chair, your vote?
Aye.
Senator Kyoko Kalale?
Aye.
Acasio votes, um, with reservations. And Senator Favella?
No.
So Chair, Senate Bill, um, thirty one oh four passes, um, with noting the presence of, uh, the absence of Senator Yarara.
Thank you. And finally, SB thirty one oh five, this is related to adoption regarding, in regards to DHHL. Recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions for discussion? Is seeing none, Senator Acasio?
Chair, Senate Bill thirty one oh five, passing as is. Chair, your vote?
Aye.
Um, Vice Chair Kyoko Kalale?
Aye.
Acasio votes aye. Senator Favella?
Reservations.
And noting, um, absence of Senator Yarara, thank you, um, Chair, your measure passes.
Thank you so much. We are adjourned. Our next hearing is gonna be Thursday at one P M, same location. Thank you so much, everyone.